The formal recording of this meeting will be available for repeated viewing afterwards on the council's website. This meeting will be run in accordance with the council's procedure rules and remote meetings protocol. Please note that there is sometimes a short delay between transmission from one camera to another. Members of the public will not be able to participate unless they have registered to speak. A message has been posted on the council's website in this regard. We have two members of the public registered to speak this evening on item four. So if I can move on to item one, which is apologies for absence. John, are there any apologies for absence, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think the only apology for absence is Tim Wolfend and one of our parish representatives.
Thank you, John. I will now read the roll call of committee members and co-opted members. When your name is called, please confirm you have joined the meeting by turning on your microphone and replying present. So councillors first, councillor Liz Hogg.
Present, Chairman.
Thank you, Liz. Councillor Ramsay-Necoty. Councillor Ramsay-Necoty. Okay, I can't see him on the list of attendees. Councillor George Potter.
I don't think he's joined the meeting.
Present.
Thank you, George. Councillor John Redpath.
Present Chair, thank you.
Councillor Deborah Seabrook.
Present Chair.
Thank you, Deborah. And Councillor James Walsh.
Present.
Thank you, James. And the co-opted members, Maria Angel, please.
She's just joined the meeting, Chairman.
Okay.
So she's present.
Fine, thanks very much. Murray Litback. Murray, are you there?
Don't think he's joined yet, Chairman.
No, he's not in the list of attendees.
Yeah.
Gila Osborne, I've seen you, I think.
Present Chairman.
Thank you, Gila. Ian Symes.
Present Chairman.
Thank you, Ian. And we know Tim Wolfend. So perhaps, John, you can keep a lookout for Murray in case he joins.
Indeed.
Thanks very much. Can I ask that any committee member or co-opted member who has been acknowledged as present, but who expects to leave the meeting before it has ended, please advise me through the meeting chat either now or prior to terminating their connection. We should also have in attendance the lead member for resources, councillor Tim Anderson, and the lead councillor for climate change, councillor Jane Harwood. Are you both there?
Present Chairman.
Present Chairman.
Good evening to you.
Good evening.
Do we have any other councillors present? If so, could they please identify themselves now via the chat room? By the chat room. Yeah, I'm sure John's keeping a... All might have all the councillors, the way his blue lights are coming on. Good evening to you all. We also have the following officers in attendance: Claire Morris, Director of Resources and Chief Finance Officer; Diane Owens, Senior Deputy Monitor Officer; Tim Dawes, Planning Development Manager; John Armstrong, Development Services and Elections Manager; and Carrie Anderson, Senior Democratic Services Officer. And from our internal audit team, from KPMG, we, I'd like to welcome to their first meeting of this committee, Director Neil Hewittson and Assistant Manager Kate Bolshul. Good evening to you both. Are you both there?
Present, thank you.
Thank you very much, you're welcome. Okay, item two, declarations of interest. May I ask any member of the committee with a disclosable pecuniary interest to declare by turning on their cameras and microphones and make the declaration to the meeting? Any pecuniary declarations to be made? Silence normally means no. Ramsey?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yes.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Have you got any pecuniary declar- um, disclosable interests? Have you any disclosable pecuniary interests to declare?
No.
Okay, so, thank you very much. May I also ask, in the interest of transparency, whether any councillor wishes to disclose a non-pecuniary interest, which may be relevant to any matter on tonight's agenda, and to confirm that they will not, this will not affect their objectivity in relation to that matter? If you do wish to disclose, please turn on your camera and microphone and make your declaration to the meeting. Are there any?
No. Why is my mic because I'm not loud?
Then also, at this stage, I have a non-pecuniary interest in item four. And so at this stage of the meeting, I explain that for item four of the agenda, I will be passing the chairmanship to councillor Seabrook, as I was previously Lead Member for Finance and Assets, and I was one of the councillors sitting on the Property Review Group. As an Aivman Marty members and members of the public, the Property Review Group is an officer-councillor working group reporting directly to the executive. It has no decision-making powers, and therefore I do not declare a DPI. But in the interest of transparency, I will step aside from the chair for the duration of this item, although I will take part in the item as necessary. So I, moving to item three. Under our procedure rules and remote meeting protocols, we are able to take a vote by affirming of the meeting if there is no dissent. May I invite voting members of the committee to indicate your affirmation by turning on your microphones that you are happy collectively to confirm the minutes of the last meeting held on 24 September 2020 as a correct record? The members confirm their agreement, please?
Agreed.
Agreed.
I didn't hear any noes. Would you please confirm if there were any? Thank you very much. On that basis, the minutes are agreed, and I will sign them at a later date when the offices are open. So item four, summary of internal audit reports, 1st of May to 31st October 2020. May I ask councillor Seabrook to take the chair? Thank you, councillor Seabrook.
I don't think there are any, uh...
Thank you, Chair. John, did you want to say something? I can't hear you. Okay, um, I can't hear John. I thought you wanted to say something, but um, if you need to say something, John, please put it in the chat, otherwise I'm just going to carry on. So, good evening, everybody. Um, before we begin, I should just mention that I am a patient of the chiropractors who currently lease Burchett's Farm, which is the subject of one of the draft reports. However, this item is not about the merits of the chiropractors. I am confident that I am able to be objective and that it will not affect my chairing of this item. May I first of all draw the committee's attention to the additional material relating to this item on the supplementary information sheet, which was circulated this afternoon? In the interest of clarity, I will read the following statement published in that supplementary information sheet. The committee will note from the agenda that the internal reports from KPMG on the review of both Burchett's Farm Barn and North Downs Housing are draft reports. And it is intended that the reports will be updated following consideration by officers and councillors. In particular, it is anticipated that additional information will be included within the Burchett's Farm Barn report, which will lead to an additional recommendation being made by the auditors in relation to the need to review the classification of assets. The reports have been included in the agenda in draft for the committee's discussion. However, it is not appropriate for further comments on the reports to be made by the auditors at this stage as part of the meeting. The committee's comments will be minuted and reviewed by the auditors as part of the process of finalizing the reports. The final reports, together with the management responses, will be reported to the committee in January for further consideration. It should be noted that decisions regarding leasing are delegated to officers in consultation with councillors, as per the council's constitution. For clarity, the published officer decision regarding Burchett's Farm Barn can be found at Appendix One of the supplementary information sheet. The minutes of the Property Review Group, an executive working group made up of councillors and officers, contain confidential information which cannot be made public, but this information will be made available to the auditors. You may wonder why draft and incomplete reports are coming before the committee. The reason is that this item has been on the agenda for several months, and so an update to the committee is due. Furthermore, in the interest of openness and transparency, it was decided to let councillors see the report at this stage to be able to give input to the final version. May I ask our Director of Resources, Claire Morris, to open the discussion?
Thank you, Chair. As the chairperson said, this is a draft report for consideration, and so it is fully anticipated that it will be brought, updated and brought back to the Corporate Governance and Standards Committee in January. In considering the report, I'd like councillors to please be aware that officers are still in the process of providing further information and supporting evidence such as the formal decision notices that have been referenced in the supplementary information sheet to the auditors. We have also provided further reports and minutes from the PRG meetings held in 2017 and a press release that was issued in March 2017 stating that the council was marketing the property for lease. We understand that some of the findings in the report relate to the fact that the Property Review Group minutes are not particularly detailed, and that has led to some of the comments in the report. I will point out that Property Review Group is an executive working group, not a decision-making body. Therefore, we have also provided minutes of corporate management team meetings and the delegated authority forms that have previously been discussed, uh, sorry, previously been mentioned this evening. In considering the part, report, part of the issue regarding the leases of be, the leasing of Burchett's Farm Barn, which has not been picked up in this particular version of the report, is that Burchett's Farm Barn was classed as, on our asset register, as an operational property with a subcategory of community facility or hall. As such, the leasing process followed was consistent with the disposal of an operational property where obtaining best consideration was required by the Local Government Act 1972, and that was applied as the predominant decision criteria. We are satisfied that having followed a commercial marketing exercise that best consideration under the 1972 Act was obtained for this asset, and that that was, um, in relation to it being an operational asset. This was detailed in the first formal decision notice published on our website on the 4th of January 2019. Obviously, over time, a request for review of the decision to lease Burchett's Barn was taken, and the outcome of the planning appeal allowed, um, gave rise to the request for the review. Therefore, a further decision notice was published in March 2020, which now supersedes the decision that was made in March 2019. It is also worth noting, the term asset of community value is referred to both in the report and by some commentators. An asset of community value is actually a formal legal designation that is made under the Asset of Community Value Regulations 2012. I would like to put out in considering this report that Burchett's Farm Barn is not designated as an asset of community value. If an asset community value is designated, then there would be a specific process that the owner of an asset of community value has to go through to dispose of, um, an ACV. But that didn't particularly apply in this case because it wasn't a formal designated asset of community value. That all said, officers accept the improvement suggestions that are made it within the report, and thank KPMG for the work, and we will continue to discuss the, the report, um, with them over the next few months with a view to finalizing it for the January meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. I appreciate the clarifications that you've given. May I now turn to our first public speaker, Mr Gavin Morgan from the Guildford Heritage Forum? Welcome, Mr Morgan. I remind you that you have a total of three minutes in which to address the meeting. Can John please keep a note of the time?
I will, Chairman, and I'll advise Gavin that when there's 30 seconds left.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I hope everybody else can, so please begin.
Thank you. My name is Gavin Morgan, and I was interviewed for the KPMG report into Burchett's Farm. Um, I hope the council will take forward the recommendations in this report. For me, it confirms that the council did not properly consider the community value of the farm and did not present an accurate assessment of the costs of running it. I want to make some basic, very obvious points. Guildford Borough Council is not a business, and it is not a property management company. It is a public service. When difficult decisions about the disposal of buildings or the reduction of services have to be made, councillors should ask themselves, are we considering the community impact as much as the financial cost? And when considering the cost of anything, councillors should ask themselves, do these figures actually add up? And does a document exist that demonstrates these figures act up, add up? In the case of Burchett's Farm, I don't think there were any documents or any proof that these figures added up. Indeed, anyone submitting financial figures to justify an argument should feel that those figures might be scrutinized. They should be required to demonstrate their working so decisions can be based on objective evidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Morgan. Our second public speaker is Honourable Alderman Gordon Bridger, who unfortunately is unable to join us this evening. Therefore, his statement will be read by John Armstrong. John, I don't think I need to remind you that you have a total of three minutes in which to address the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so this is the statement from Honorary Alderman Gordon Bridger. As follows, uh, councillors should be aware that in March 2020, at the request of councillor Maddie Redpath, I had a meeting with the council internal auditor. I was impressed by the fact that she told me she had appointed KPMG as their auditors did not want a repeat of the Wisley Row in quotes. I was surprised that such an, and such an initiative could be contemplated. After many months of badgering, I was able to obtain information that the council were employing consultants who were also responsible for advising GPC on finance. This absolutely vital fact was withheld from the report. They did not mention the email from councillor Manning to myself, which admitted that councillors Furness and Nelson Smith had approved the report despite them being members of the planning committee. Neither did it mention that he had approved the proposal without planning permission. Councillor Davis stated in an email to me and his two local councillors that it would go to the executive. When I discovered it hadn't been approved by the executive, councillor Manning said he had made the decision under delegated authority. This was confirmed recently by councillor Davis in The Guildford Dragon. This report does not reveal any of these details, and it is quite shocking that a democratic council should be authorizing leases on valuable assets in such a cavalier manner. Why was an unauthorized report sent out without identifying those approving of the proposal or under what authority? Gordon Bridger. That's, that's the end. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And I now ask Claire Morris to address any points raised by the public speakers.
Thank you, Chair. I think in relation to Gavin Morgan's comments, and I would just like to say that, um, I think we feel that we've provided additional information to KPMG in relation to and various briefing notes and summary property reports that were provided, um, to councillors of the Property Review Group, and also, um, obviously, as I said, to CMT, that were taken into account in making the decisions. I fully accept that the fact that some of the costs were misstated in the report were, um, regrettable, and that, that hadn't been picked up sooner. However, I'm not entirely convinced with the statement that there are no documents available. We have provided significant documentation to KPMG now in order to demonstrate that the item was fully considered by the Property Review Group and various officers and councillors involved in the decision. In relation to, um, Gordon Bridger, I think it's clear in the statements that we've made this evening that it was officers who appointed, um, sorry, oh, it was officers that appointed KPMG to do the review. It was not councillor Maddie Redpath. And KPMG are our outsourced internal auditor, and it would be completely normal for us to ask them to do the review as part of our internal audit process. I would like to make it abundantly clear that KPMG do not provide financial advice to the council. And as been mentioned a number of times, and also in the supplementary information sheet, under the council's constitution, as this was not a key decision, decisions to lease assets are not, um, are made by officers under delegated authority, but in full consultation with lead councillors and relevant ward councillors. And, and also those decision notices are published on our website. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Claire. Um, I now ask the Lead Councillor for resources, councillor Tim Anderson, if he wishes to make any comments on the public speakers.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a few comments. Um, criticism in KPMG's draft report into the leasing of Burchett's Farm Barn is extensive. It describes a process which was out, out of control, where governance was inconsistent and ineffective. Key decisions were made, but the report says that there was no record of when or by whom. However, since this draft report was circulated, some documents which were assumed to be missing have come to light. I hope the final report will also reflect on why this information has only appeared at the 11th hour. However, some information used to make the leasing decision were, was inaccurate. The inclusion of Burchett's Farm cottages, which is a different asset, which are different assets, in the financial information being the most glaring. Alternatives to commercial leasing were only considered five years after the first report on leasing was commissioned, and after a lease had been offered to a tenant. Advertising to involve the public in the decision to lease was half-hearted and ineffective. The report provides six areas for improvement to address these problems. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. That concludes the public section, public speaking section of the meeting. I will now turn to the agenda. For clarity, I intend to approach each report separately. Firstly, the Internal Audit Progress Report. May I now ask Neil Hewittson from KPMG to switch on his camera and microphone and comment on the report? Uh, Mr Hewittson, I understand you will only be commenting on this report this evening. Um, I noticed that quite a lot of people are requesting to speak, um, but we need to let Mr Hewittson have his comments, and we also need to let councillor Anderson make any comments about the internal audit section, so, um, I, I, you will get your chance. Right, um, Mr Hewittson.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so first of all, uh, we're delighted to be here. Um, we have previously worked with the council, um, as part of the co-sourced internal audit arrangements um, as recently as 1920, but as of the 2021 financial year, we are um, your outsourced internal audit providers, and therefore we are attending this meeting, and we will be attending these meetings going forward. Um, the paper that I want you to talk to is our progress report. Um, so this provides a summary of the work that we have completed since our appointment, um, and also what we will be completing ahead of the next meeting of the committee in January in 2021. At the bottom of, um, page two of our progress report, you can see there the totality of the reviews that we have um, agreed to undertake in the 2021 cycle, and also which meetings of the committee we will be reporting them to. And as you can see from the table, we've completed two reviews, um, both of which we have summarized over the page on pages three and four of our report. So taking the first, um, in relation to treasury management, so we have looked at the design of the treasury management controls and the governance arrangements in place, and we've also looked at compliance with those controls. And given, um, the COVID position, we have also looked at how the council has responded to um, the remote working environment, uh, and how the treasury management controls are continuing to be operated in light of um, COVID and remote working. And as you can see from page three of our report, we have agreed three medium priority recommendations with management. They are around the timely completion of monthly bank reconciliations, addressing a single point of failure in the team, performing those recommend, uh, those reconciliations, and finally updating some of the procedural guidance around treasury management. And as I say, all of those recommendations have been agreed by management and actions are in place to address them. Over the page on page four, we've provided a summary here of our, um, review of payroll. So again, here we have looked at the design of, um, the payroll control environment, and also um, the level of compliance with those controls around new starters um, at the council leavers and amendments to those pay, uh, for continuing members of staff. And again, we've also considered the council's response, um, in light of COVID and the remote working arrangements. In light of this review, we have agreed six recommendations with management. Um, three of those are medium priority, and three of them are low priority. Um, and they all relate to tightening up controls around the levers process and also amendments of um, pay details for individual members of staff. And finally, just tightening up on some of the, um, procedural guidance and policy documentation that is in place. As I say, all of those are agreed with management, and we have, um, actions in place to address them. That was all I wanted to say on the progress report. Unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hewittson. May I now ask the Lead Councillor of Resources, councillor Tim Anderson, whether he wishes to make any comments on the progress report?
Thank you, Chair. Very briefly, I'd like to say that the, um, Internal Audit Progress Report is suitably uncontroversial, factual, and informative. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, councillor Anderson. First, may I ask if any non-member of this committee wishes to comment or ask a question?
Councillor Spooner had indicated, Chairman, that he wished to, wished to comment.
Okay, councillor Spooner, carry on.
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Can I just confirm that we're only talking on the Internal Audit Progress Report at this time, because I have other comments to make in relation to other items?
Yes, that's quite right, councillor Spooner. We're going to, um, because we've got such a wide-ranging, um, area to look at, I felt it better to split it into three so that we could put them individually.
That makes, makes perfect sense to me, thank you. So in relation to, um, the progress report, I have a question really. And that is, if we go back many years, treasury management at, uh, at Guildford Borough Council through successive audits has been lauded as very successful. And we now have a partial assurance with the improvements required. Now, having looked at the, uh, at the, uh... Now, having looked at the comments and the improvements that have been made, particularly listed as medium, I'd like to understand why we've seen such a change from significant assurance in the past to now only partial assurance. And for me, it's a surprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other non-members of the committee wishing to speak?
There's nothing in the chat, Madam Chairman. There appear to be committee members that wish to now comment.
Right. So, Mr Hewetson, do you want to respond to that before we go to the members of the committee?
Thank you. I'm happy to give a bit more detail about what's driven our assurance rating for the current year. Unfortunately, I'm not aware of what's happened in the past and therefore I'm probably not best placed to comment on what's gone before this current financial year. Perhaps Claire might be better placed to give you that information.
Thank you, Claire. Did you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, in the past, it has been a good assurance and generally it would have been a good assurance this time round as well, with the exception of the fact that since we've implemented the Business World system, we haven't, which was in August, we haven't yet managed to reconcile the bank account, the monthly bank account reconciliation. And I believe that's what's led to the partial assurance. However, what I can say to councillors is that it's actually not uncommon to not be able to reconcile the bank reconciliation for a small period of time after the go-live of a new finance system. And we have or we are in the process of implementing further modules of Business World, including the bank reconciliation module that will help us improve the efficiency of the bank reconciliation going forward, as well as an income manager module. And so that's the sort of longer term solution. We have started to train up additional staff to do the bank reconciliation. I fully acknowledge we do have a bit of a staffing issue within that particular area that is confidential and obviously quite complex as well. But we are training additional staff to do the bank reconciliation and we have brought in a member of agency staff to help, to allow us to cover the workload, to bring us back up to speed. So work on progressing the reconciliation of the August bank reconciliation is continuing. And I remain fairly confident that we'll be able to reconcile our banks short in the next few weeks or so.
Thank you, Claire. Councillor Anderson, did you want to say anything at this point?
No, no, thank you, Chairman, Chair.
Okay. Now, are there any members of the committee who wish to comment or ask a question? So far, I've got John Redpath and Ian Symes. If anybody else would like to, could they please put it in the chat? Meantime, John Redpath, please carry on.
Chair, Chair, sorry, could I just ask, because I'm getting a bit confused here. Are we taking the elements of this report in a particular order? Or are we jumping around between different bits of it? Because it's not entirely clear which bits people want to speak on. And so I just wonder what order we're going to be taking it in. Thank you.
This is, thank you, councillor Potter. This is simply on the audit report, the progress of the audit report at the moment. We'll be moving on to North Downs Housing and Burchett's Barn later. But we're just trying to take one thing at a time. So both John Redpath and Ian Symes have said they would like to speak on the internal audit report. So carry on, John.
Thank you, Chair. Just looking at the payroll report, I see that HR are effectively meant to sign off. I don't know if that's the right word, the backs payments. I just wanted to know in a bit more detail what the person in HR is meant to do. Does that person actually check? Or obviously, they check that the person hasn't left and that the person should be paid and so forth. But are they also meant to check how much that person's being paid? What is their function in the signing off? And then my second question is, is in these times where we're all working from home, does the back system allow, if you like, a dual signatory signing off when officers who do that signing off are working from home? Or is it necessary for them to come into the office, as it were, to do that on the systems available? Thank you.
Claire, do you want to take these one at a time or will you wait until the other councillors have spoken?
I'm happy to take them one at a time, Chair. So in terms of the payroll report sign off, my understanding is that they need to check the totals of the backs run compared to the pay run that's been run out of the system. And that's the sign-off process is to actually make sure the control totals are right. It wouldn't be possible really to go through line by line on the backs run for the size of staff that we have on our payroll. But obviously checks our run on the payroll itself. And then in terms of the back system sign off, we can sign documents off electronically at the moment, so that's fine.
Thank you. We now have Ian Symes.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I must say that I share councillor Spooner's concerns about treasury management. I've been on the committee for some time and I think from when the committee started to inherit treasury management responsibilities. So I am disappointed with the recommendations that have come out here. I'm wondering whether it would be possible to have an update at the January meeting with regard to the remedial actions that are being taken over these treasury management recommendations.
Thank you, Ian. I think that's a very reasonable request. I think we'll move on to Maria, Maria Angel now.
Hello there. Understanding the enormous difficulties endured by GBC officers and councillors and committee members due to having to adapt to remote working, has that consideration really been taken into account under the KPMG report? Thank you.
Thank you. And next we've got Ramsey and then we'll go back to Claire and Ian for any comments, Claire and Neil for any comments they may have.
Thank you. Thank you to Claire for clarifying the point about working to train up additional members of staff. She kindly pointed out that we had agency staff brought in in order to cover. So I'm assuming the agency staff are covering on other work to enable a permanent member of staff or more than one permanent member of staff to be trained up on this bank reconciliation and that it's not the agency staff that are being trained. That's the first point. And the second point was covered on the remedial report on action taken that our colleague Ian just asked. So that covered my other point. So if Claire could just confirm that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramsey. So Claire, would you like to comment?
Yes, just to confirm, it is permanent members of staff that we are training up to do the bank rec. But once we bring in the income manager and the bank reconciliation module, we will probably be able to train yet further staff to do it within that team. And the process anyway will be a lot more automated, which is the aim.
Thank you. And Neil, I think Maria raised a question that perhaps about remote working that perhaps you can address.
Thank you. Yes, in both the payroll and the treasury management, we've looked at how the council has adapted its control environment in light of remote working to maintain the controls that are important for governing those two areas. And we have no concerns to report to committee about how that process has been working. So it's a positive conclusion in light of that remote working environment for us.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson, would you like to respond at all?
No, I think Claire and Neil have covered the points more than adequately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other councillors asking to speak. I would just like to endorse Ian's request that we get an update on progress at the January meeting. Is that okay, Claire? Can you get that organised for us?
Yeah, that's fine. No problem.
Thank you very much. Right, I will now move on to the draft reports included in the agenda. Councillor Anderson, you have already spoken about Burchett's Farm Barn. Did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
On Burchett's Farm Barn, no, Chair. I'd like to speak about the North Downs Housing Governance Report whenever is the appropriate moment.
Okay, we'll do that later. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have the opportunity for non-members of this committee who wish to comment or ask a question. I've already heard that Maddie Redpath, councillor Paul Spooner, David Bilby wished to speak. I'm just looking this, I'm just looking at my list. Okay. And we are, councillor John Redpath, you will get the opportunity, but first of all, we're taking questions from non-members of the committee. And likewise, George Potter, we will come to you, but we've got the non-members first. So I've got Maddie Redpath, Paul Spooner and I'm not sure if David Bilby is here. I had heard that he wanted to say something. Okay, so.
Chairman, I can clarify if you like for David Bilby. He has dropped me a note to say that he has a bar council CPD event. So I don't think that he will be present this evening.
All right. Okay, thank you for explaining that. Okay, so Maddie Redpath first, please.
Thank you, Chair. There are several valid and sensible recommendations in the Burchett's Farm Barn report, which I hope all councillors will support. I propose that we form a working group which is tasked at looking at all council-owned community assets and how they are run. As members might know, there are community assets that struggle to make ends meet with the council having to fill the shortfall. Are these assets being managed and run in the most inclusive way? Is the council, sorry, is the community aware that the asset is at risk? What other options are available? What can we do to prevent losing another community asset? We need to try and prevent other assets ending up in a financial state, in the same financial state that the barn was in. This working group should be inclusive and as transparent as possible, including interested members of the public and key stakeholders. The officers were given no clear direction or process during the disposal of the barn. We, as councillors, must make it our top priority to create a community asset transfer policy and clear procedures that officers can follow with confidence. There are a couple of things I'd like addressing in the report before it is finalised. A list of every one KPMG consultant during the production of the report needs to be added. I ask for local community groups to be contacted and those that replied should be listed somewhere. Whenever it states unable to provide sufficient documentation, it would be useful to clarify if this is because there was no documentation, the council ran out of time to provide it or if it was withheld for confidentiality reasons. In the last week, it has become clear that there were members of the last administration that felt uncomfortable with the disposal of this particular asset. I'm sure that other, also officers felt uncomfortable. This council needs to create a safe space where officers and members can come forward when they feel something isn't right and be taken seriously. And in reality, if the process was questioned back in 2017 and was addressed by the previous administration, I doubt I would be speaking here today or even be a councillor. However, let's not dwell on the past for too long. The report is not intended to be a witch hunt by any means, but a learning exercise. We need to see this report as an opportunity to improve the council, better engage with our residents and support our officers in giving them clear direction for the future. I would like to congratulate and thank KPMG for their fantastic work in producing this report and having to deal with my relentless emails. I would also like to thank officers for their cooperation with the final report, with the current report and final report and supporting the council's transparency pledge by releasing the review to the public. Finally, I'd like to thank Alderman Bridger for, without his constant persistence, I probably would have given up months ago. I look forward to hearing the committee's comments and seeing the final report in January. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Redpath. Now councillor Spooner.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I don't want to sound critical of councillor Maddie Redpath here because she did campaign very strongly back before she became a councillor with her father and family in relation to Burchett's Farm. And I think it was probably a very sensible idea for her to put forward the review. But I do have significant issues with the way that this has been handled. Firstly, as the previous leader of the council, the first I heard about this was when I saw it coming through and saw the Dragon article. And I can't possibly understand, assuming that the article in the press is correct, that someone who's not a member of the executive was able to commission KPMG and the public cost involved. I assume it went through due process. And I would like to understand, and perhaps we should audit, the process for that decision-making in its own right. I cannot understand, except if this was purely political and officers aren't supposed to be that political, why are we having two bites at the same cherry here? This is coming forward in a state that is not and clearly is not factually correct. It is a draft. And I cannot understand, in what I would describe as an early draft, why we are bringing it to this committee. I can understand it going through internal discussion and I certainly think all of us, I'm sure, would agree from an open and transparent perspective that the final report should come forward or indeed an advanced draft. It is, in my opinion, fundamentally flawed. I cannot understand why executive or former executive members were not consulted on this. Councillor Redpath has just said that she harassed the KPMG and thanked them. Well, they certainly didn't harass me because they didn't call me in any way or form. And as former leader, that's ridiculous. And looking at the list of the people they did interview, they're the campaigners that were involved in trying to stop what was, at the time, not an asset of community value. As it happens, I was very uncomfortable and I think I stated it publicly about the way that this was handled. And I'm extremely concerned about the errors and it's a significant error because a councillor has to trust officer input in relation to inaccurate financial information. That would have had a significant impact on the decision-making process. And I think we need to very seriously look at heads, I'm afraid, that should roll in relation to councillors being expected to make objective decisions if the information that's presented to them is factually inaccurate. That concerns me greatly. There are comments about the council has not been able to provide documentation from the executive or the Property Review Group. Are we talking about the current executive? Are we talking about the previous executive? What exactly has been reviewed here? The decision that was taken was obviously taken under the new administration post-May 2019 and was actually the same decision that was being presented as a recommendation. and was actually the same decision that was being presented as a recommendation to the previous administration. And yet, if I look at the way this has been played in the press and the way that it's been played politically, you would think that the Tories, my party, have behaved in some inappropriate way. Well, the officers that were providing the information and evidence to the current administration are the same officers providing the information to the previous administration, erroneous as it would appear to be. I'm absolutely shocked that this has gone as far as it has without it coming anywhere near myself or other previous executive members. I understand that councillor Manning was made aware late on in the day. So he didn't make me aware, but he was at least made aware, whereas I certainly haven't been made aware at all. And the completeness of meeting records, the asset management strategy and framework, and the timeline is wrong, it's factually inaccurate, there's no reference to the Executive Management Liaison Group. I'm shocked that the Programme Management Group, the property, sorry, management group, did not have better records. And that, I think, is very unfortunate for when you're trying to run and understand a compliance audit. So this is a very, very sorry state of affairs, and reflects very poorly, not just on this administration or the previous administration, it reflects very poorly on this council. And I think that we do need to think very seriously, not just about the recommendations, but actually about the process and the way that this has been handled, in my opinion, deliberately political. And that is really, really sad, that officers have behaved so politically, trying to damage my party. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Spooner. I have, I think that's the only two people who are not on the committee who've asked to speak. Is that right, John?
Yes, I think so, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so Lead Councillor for Resources, Tim Anderson, would you like to respond?
I think councillor Spooner makes some very relevant points, but our officers aren't able to defend their reputation, and I can say that I think the councillors, sorry, that the officers have supplied information and helped KPMG to the best of their ability. And I think that councillor Spooner knows what a dedicated, honest collection of officers we have. And so I do think he should take back the accusation that they are acting politically. They're certainly not acting politically on any mandate handed out by the current administration. What we were looking for was a thorough, honest, open examination of the process that this leasing out went through. And yes, the report still has some shortcomings, but the great advantage is that it's now in the public domain. It gives opportunity for everybody, including you, councillor Spooner, to critique it and add more information so that a more complete report can be arrived at. So I think this process is very healthy, and at the end of the day, we will have some really good analyses and good ways to move forward, which I'm sure the Chair will outline when she gets the opportunity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Anderson. Moving on now, we have members of the committee who wish to speak. I have John Redpath, I have George Potter, Ramsay Nagati and Liz Hocker. So, John Redpath.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to councillor Spooner to effectively prove that he had actually lost any control of what was going on under his administration, including on the barn. But, I mean, at the end of the day, to blame the officers, there's not a single member of the last council, councillor Davis, councillor, well, any of them, they're all innocent, everyone's innocent. I find that absolutely amazing, and to blame the officers, I think, is absolutely shocking. And I do echo what Tim Anderson said. I mean, no one's perfect, but it's cruel, I think, to bring this fully down on the officers. What I really wanted to say is that I welcome this report, which I see as both fair and thorough. I also congratulate Maddie in her determination and involvement in investigation. I know that the barn has some special memories for her. As someone who rented Burchett's Farm Barn three times for some excellent family gatherings, I was amazed when I heard that the council were disposing of it. Unfortunately, this was something I found out far too late, as the council had already agreed to lease the building to a local business. This is another reason why, as in this current administration, we had to let it go in order not to go back on something the previous administration had signed up to. Unfortunately, this was something I found far too late, as the council had already agreed to lease the building to a local business. The fact I knew nothing about this deal may well stand as evidence that the building's disposal was not properly advertised, one of the criticisms levelled by this report. How things have changed at GBC over the last 17 years. In 2003, the newly-elected Conservative administration fully backed the conversion of the Spike into a community inherited centre, something which the local community supported. What a vote winner! That earned the Conservative Party their first majority since 1987. To this day, I thank council leader Andrew Hodges and his members for taking that decision. In my view, until very, very recently, he was the best leader at this council. And there are still a few of those councillors around today who remember that time. Nigel. What a contrast to the attitude apparent in 2017, when no member of the council, not even the ward councillors, took the slightest interest in trying to keep the barn as a building for community use. Where the administration had assumed their majority was so great, they no longer had to consider the views of residents and that the future of all council-owned buildings could be decided by officers through delegated responsibility. Before disposing of the barn, there was no investigation into why Walthamstow Memorial Hall, St Catherine's Hall, Chilworth Village Hall and the Spike are all run at virtually no cost to the council. There was no consideration as to why the barn's maintenance costs and the recharging for council services were so high. £90,000 in 2015-16, for instance. The £7,000 water leak that went unnoticed in 2016-17 was just lumped in as general running costs for the building. My view is that had the barn been run, my view is that the barn had been run more as an aside, more of an inconvenience than an asset in its own right. Had the barn been managed by an independent trust or parish council, it is certain that we would not be here today, and the borough would still have the use of a fantastic building for family gatherings, including wedding receptions and christening parties. I would like to ask this committee to recommend that the register of community assets is checked to make sure it is fully up to date, and that it includes Burchett's Farm Barn. It is still a community asset, and it always should have been on that list. Also, please, could we recommend that a policy document is written so that transfers and disposal of the buildings on the community's asset list are handled in a better way in the future? Maybe the content of this document could be undertaken by a working group from this committee. Finally, I'd like to conclude by wishing Philip and Annie and the Guildford Chiropractic Committee team well during their 10-year lease by barn, and that their business flourishes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Redpath. Councillor Anderson, would you like to respond at this stage? Or do you want to hear some more comments? Shall we move on?
I think we may move on, Chair. More comments, please.
Thank you. So now I ask councillor George Potter.
Thank you. I apologize in advance, because this is, this report touches on a number of areas, and I think, and so therefore I'm going to have to group my comments and questions into several areas for the sake of consistency. I think in terms of the next steps arising from this, on the one hand, there seems to be a few clear steps, which I hope this committee will be willing to recommend. One, I definitely think we need an audit of our existing assets of community value to see what they are and what state they're in. But I think, more widely speaking, this council could benefit from undertaking an exercise of going through ward by ward, assisting councillors and community organisations to come forward to name what they consider to be local assets of community value, so that they can all be formally registered. To the best of my knowledge, having gone through a process of registering an asset of community value before, the executive for this council, or the council's heart, can at its discretion add an asset to the register of assets of community value. We have village halls, community halls, sports grounds, sports clubs, all manner of buildings across the borough, which are not formal assets of community value. But these could be added to the list in a relatively straightforward desktop paper exercise with just by the means of little consultation with communities, with councillors, and then rubber stamping it by the executive or by the full councillors appropriate. So I strongly recommend that we do that. And I also very much think we need to embrace the recommendation that we need a clear policy for our heritage and community assets. I've been really pleased in my own ward of a new approach being taken by councillor Anderson and by this new coalition administration. But I am aware that this has been very much an ad hoc policy. I think a formal policy is long overdue, and I hope we can do that, and I propose that as a recommendation as well. I also think we need a recommendation from this committee that the management and operations of our community assets and the like needs to be urgently reviewed. For instance, if one, and this has not just been an issue with Burchett's Farm Barn, where part of the issue with its low usage was the poor way in which it was advertised and the pricing structure, but we've also seen it with the operation of the Tenth Street Woods campsite. I can see it in my own ward, where we have a Sutherland Memorial Hall, which is owned and managed by the council, and if you go onto the Hall's, the higher section of the council website, previously you just got a phone number for booking secretary if you had any queries about it. And now you don't get any information whatsoever, because it says the page doesn't exist. For most other community halls, if a user wants, if a member of the public wants to book a facility, you cannot see a price list, you cannot find out any information about facilities available. The best you can hope for are an email address and phone number. It is not surprising that many of our assets might not be performing well financially when we seem to set out to almost deliberately make it difficult for members of the public to actually use them. So I'd hope we can recommend that this be improved as well. I also think, however, and I must partially agree with some of councillor Spooner's criticism, although I don't agree with the somewhat typical attempt to avoid any accountability for the records of the previous administration, or in order to endorse the notion that there's some sort of conspiracy against the Conservative Party, I think most people just call it transparency and accountability. I am concerned by the process that has been followed with this report, in that I too had very limited knowledge of this report until I saw it reported in the press. And I am particularly concerned about the inaccurate financial information that was provided to councillors and also by proxy to the public. A £40,000 to £70,000 oversating of the operating costs of Burchett's Farm Barn, and therefore the misrepresentation that that amount of money could be saved by disposing of the asset is more than a simple error. It is more than to be accounted for by simple administrative error. Somebody must have produced those figures, somebody must have signed off on those figures. The fact that councillors responsible did not think to question those figures, and how absurdly high they are, is unfortunate, but ultimately councillor Spooner is correct, councillors should be able to trust the figures provided by officers. And unfortunately, this does not appear to be the first time that, from this department, from the relevant department in particular, that incomplete or misleading information has been provided and has had to be exposed to later date through investigation by councillors and members of the public. This is undoubtedly most egregious, but I think more than a general recommendation to not do this in the future, we need answers as to how this happened and who personally was responsible. There must be some level of personal accountability, because without personal accountability, there is no, there is no way to ensure that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. So those are the recommendations I'd like to make specifically. I do have, I have some questions. And the questions I have firstly in relation to the KPMG report itself, and this might also need to be a recommendation, is the documentation reviewed by KPMG does not appear to have included councillor emails about the topic, and yet there was quite clearly correspondence between the relevant councillors and members of the public. There had been no conversations with previous ward councillors for the ward in question, who were notified reportedly of the decision to go ahead with the leasing of the barn. There haven't been, there's not appeared to have been conversations with the previous council leader or with a previous lead member, or with former councillor Jeff Davis, who was also involved in this area of process. I'll also note that there seems to have been error in the KPMG timeline, in that according to the KPMG report, March 2019 arrived after October 2019. I presume that's just a simple mistake, but it would be useful for that to be corrected. But I think the real question is, can additional documentation be reviewed? In particular, can KPMG have had conversations with other people involved? Because I do, I must again agree with councillor Spooner's comment, that there appear to be conversations with members of the public and members of the council with an interest in the issue, and interviews with councillors, with the officers responsible, but no conversations with the politicians responsible at the time, and that seems anomalous to me. So I hope we can see that included before the final report. And I'll, I'm conscious of how long I've been speaking for, so I will wrap up shortly. I do also have questions for the officers in particular, is that, and perhaps for councillor Anderson as well. Again, the fallacy of discrepancy really needs an answer as to how this runs. But more broadly speaking, the issue is of, we gave, the council gave the bare legal minimum of public notice when it came to the disposal and the leasing and this listing of bids for Burchett's Farm Barn. This is part of a pattern which we have seen time and time again with numerous decisions which have interested the community, not just across the borough, but also my own ward in particular. The council does the bare legal minimum necessary, not even quite often, even doing so much as to post an article in the news section of the council website. Putting an advert in a newspaper or putting up a single A4 notice at the location and saying 'job done' is not good enough. We need to move towards doing the maximum possible public notice, not the minimum. And I'd question why we are not doing that already. I'd question, is that going to be changed? Again, I think the report also...
Councillor, I think you're going to have to wrap up pretty quickly now.
I'll wrap up very quickly then. Inconsistencies in validating the bidding, I think it would also be useful to have more information about how that came about. I think there's also fundamental question of who made what decisions when. But above all, I just think it's a very sorry situation that has arrived to this point. We all have to deal with the situation as it is now, and I feel very sort of chiropractor who brought the brunt of public approval for this, whereas the councillors responsible for the decision failed to speak up or to set the record straight, but it almost attracts your attention to the significant cost to incur to the council, not just the cost of the bidding process or the planning appeal, and not the cost, not the cost of the community who have been lost for 10 years of an asset, but also, of course, the cost involved in the KPMG report itself, and indeed in the two bidding processes that took place. You know, the cost has been considerable, and it is mind-boggling that this was ever allowed to happen. And my final question would be, how can the lead member responsible for this grotesque saga continue to reasonably, continue to chair an important body scrutinising the corporate governance of this council? So yes, but I hope in particular that councillor Anderson might be able to address my suggestions for recommendations and ways forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Potter. Councillor Anderson, would you like to respond to councillors Redpath and Potter before we go on to other councillors?
I have to say that after councillor Potter's extensive critique, I don't think I need to say anything about councillor Redpath. I think councillor Redpath made good points, but very uncontroversially really, which is to his credit. In terms of councillor Potter, I applaud his incisive analysis. I can't say that I want a witch hunt to find out culprits here or there. We're talking about years ago, I simply don't believe that a blame culture would be good for this council. Let's learn the lessons, best do better. Councillor Potter has come up with a whole list of really good ideas which we should grasp with both hands and move forward as rapidly as possible and incorporate into the report that we examine in January. And I think councillor Potter, that this is an excellent analysis and set of recommendations. And I applaud you for that, as I said. And I see your criticisms of the way this report has been presented and its shortcomings. But for my mind, that's its strength. Its strength is that we are getting the issues out in the open as early as possible and drawing on your, people like you, your experience, your ideas, so that when we get to the final report and in January, if it's not perfect, we'll send it back and we'll revise it and we'll come up with an even better set of recommendations. But without this process that we've gone through tonight, I don't think we would have got the best results. And I feel more confident than ever that we will get the best results out of this and we will not have the debacle that we suffered over Burchett's Farm Barn going forward. And I would say that, you know, don't put blame on KPMG, don't begrudge the cost of KPMG. This has been a process that is cathartic. It's going to result in a much better outcome. Sorry, my phone is going bananas here. And yeah, I would say that I welcome most of what councillor Potter said. And okay, let's move forward, Chair, and let other people have their views now.
Thank you councillor Anderson. I've got waiting councillors Nagati, Hoggart and Manning in that order. So councillor Nagati.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to look at this from two specific points of view. One is obviously that we need to learn from what has happened. I'm not sure what the advantages are of a witch hunt, but I do believe that the public would want whoever's responsible for the mistakes to put their hands up and say, I could have done this better. And I don't think we need a witch hunt. What we need is people to understand how things progress the way they did and how we can ensure that we move forward in the future in a better way. I'm aware of small assets within my ward where the officers have looked to utilise them in what they consider a better way for the council. And they have approached the parish council, they have approached the ward councillors and there has been a dialogue. But there has clearly been a perceived view that, you know, their idea of what to do with it is the one and only idea. And therefore I think we need to look possibly through a task group as suggested earlier at better ways of handling such things in the future and setting out a more clear procedure so that wider views are sought early on, better marketing, better management happens. Too often it's decided that they've got a better idea for something and they let the asset die, sometimes not even realising what community use is actually still being used of that asset. And, you know, I had one in my ward where we brought that to attention that there wasn't just two people groups using it, there was a third. And instead of moving forward in a positive way with those communities and discussing it, it was simply a matter of changing the locks and stopping them using it. We really do need to look in detail at the assets we have and how we can manage them better. And if we are going to dispose of assets or lease them out or change the use, then there has to be a proper procedure in place and it shouldn't just be by delegated authority. There must be transparency, there must be community involvement and there must be council involvement. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Nagati. With all due respect, I'm noticing a little bit of repetition creeping into some of the councillor comments. So can I just ask the remaining speakers to try and limit themselves to new points? By all means, say that you agree with predecessors, but if we can move on because we still have a lot of things to discuss tonight. So thank you. And now councillor Hoggart.
Thank you, Chairman. Indeed, I don't want to repeat the detailed points that have been made. Except to say that I first became aware of this disposal as a member of the planning committee. And in fact, I was quite surprised by it at that time. And I was one of those who spoke against and voted against giving this change of use planning permission, which was then unfortunately overturned at appeal. And I don't think there is any point in further discussing the detail of this report. Doubtless when we get the final report, which I think is coming to us in January or whenever, there will be more to say at that point about the details of what went wrong. Obviously, something went wrong. But there are, I think, things that we could do more quickly than that. Councillor Potter suggested we make lots of things community assets, assets of community value. Now, it's not a straightforward process. I've done it. It's very bureaucratic. But I would have thought we can at least go through the council's assets and just label them as community facilities. Now, I don't know what the financial labels are, but if we can label them as a community hall or community sports field or whatever, but just flag up that they are community use facilities. And then I think we should look at changing the council's constitution so that for a community facility, it's not permitted to make a delegated decision about disposal. I think it should go to the executive. And so I hope we can look at changing the constitution and do that fairly quickly because it's quite obvious that these things need to have proper scrutiny and be decided at a meeting of the executive, giving people time to ask questions and the public to get involved. So that would be my first really strong recommendation. I do like the idea of a working group, which councillor Maddie Redpath originally suggested. I think it might go a little bit further than I think she is suggesting because we have community facilities all over the borough. Some are owned by the Borough Council and the Borough Council may well be prepared to make a loss on the running of them because they're providing community facilities. We've got lots of community facilities, halls, sports fields, which are owned by either trusts or parish councils. And they also very often struggle and are often paid for through the council tax preset, through the preset for parish councils or by lots and lots of volunteer time fundraising. So perhaps a working group could have a look at community facilities in general and have a sort of general policy about how we can best support community facilities, whether they're council owned, parish council owned, or if they're owned by trusts. Now, I'm not sure, that's quite a big remit, but I would very much like us to consider looking at that as a general policy position for this council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hoggart. Councillor Anderson, would you like to respond?
Only briefly. Councillor Hoggart's got great experience and she often gives us great insights into a variety of things. I think definitely we've got to look at the process of delegated decisions and I don't know how we change the constitution, but we should look at this very rapidly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have councillor Nigel Manning.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I seemed to have come in for a bit of a serious criticism without the full facts being presented. I was not involved until May two thousand and eighteen regarding Burchett's Farm Barn as I was involved in the Merit. Yet, and the decision to actually sell Burchett's Barn was taken back in October sixteen. And throughout that period, went out to consultations and early two thousand and seventeen, it was the doctor's surgery that came forward and that didn't fall through until June two thousand and eighteen. That's nearly eighteen months, yet no person, councillor or member of the public came forward regarding that particular disposal at that time. And it's worth repeating that Burchett's Farm Barn was never designated a community asset. It would have been dealt with differently if it was. I also believe that officers, whilst they could be criticised, I believe that officers supplied their reports and the figures in those reports in good faith. We are all human and sometimes mistakes happen. But it's important to learn from those mistakes and to find out why that happened. I understand that a particular property was included within the overall costing that shouldn't have been. Very regrettable. I'm not too sure the decision to actually dispose of the barn would have changed. I was actually contacted by KPMG about three weeks ago to be asked to give some comments. I got this distinct impression that this was an afterthought. Yet, I spent over an hour discussing the situation and what had happened as far as I was aware. Yet, I was very surprised that nothing of what I discussed with them or told them has actually been included in the report. Neither has it identified that in fact they spoke to me within that report. I wasn't aware who else had been contacted to give feedback until the draft report came out, which I was very surprised it came out in that particular format. And so basically not with all the full facts in. And what's also interesting is I don't understand why GBC have told you, KPMG, that there are no records of decisions, agendas and things because I do keep lots of agendas and minutes from previous meetings, basically to go back and look at. And I've got a large number of agendas and minutes relating certainly to the time I was involved, Burchett's Farm Barn, the decision-making process and it going through PRG. The thing is that when we have large tender items, we have legislation which says that you have to tell the tenderer what value is being given to the price of the, what they're bidding for, the design, et cetera, et cetera. Yet with smaller assets like Burchett's Farm Barn, there are no particular legal requirements and therefore procedures were set down back in, as I understand, two thousand and twelve, which were followed. So there is no legal requirement to do what is being asked. So in my view, it is actually important that GBC does have a set of rules, matrices where if we are looking to dispose of assets, that the people actually bidding for those assets know what value, what score they're going to get for the annual rent, deliverability, community asset value and things like that. Something I was very keen on many years ago when I was first doing the job, but it never actually came in. So I actually do fully support the recommendations that are set out in the report. And I do also fully support the recommendation regarding having a separate list for community assets. There is already, there was a list several years ago of all the assets owned by GBC, including the rent, whether, what they were, whether condition they are in, condition surveys and things like that. So it may not be too much of an onerous piece of work to get that document back out and update it to see where we are. But I'll fully support the recommendations and do what I can to help them through. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Manning. Councillor Anderson, did you want to respond?
No, I'd just like to thank councillor Manning for his comments. Very constructive.
Thank you. I now have councillor Julia Osborne.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll keep my comments rather brief because I know that you've been on this subject for quite a long time. In terms of an observation I have, I think councillor Hoggart is absolutely correct. We've got community facilities which are slightly different to assets of community value. And I think Claire Morris made the point at the beginning of the meeting, there is a process the council needs to go through to designate assets of community value, a particular status they need to have. But in terms of our community facilities, there was a case in Send of some garages that roamed by the council which were reviewed and subject to valuation. And in July twenty nineteen, a option agreement was entered into with a developer. This meant that the garages would be disposed of when a subsequent development of housing followed. This has also some striking similarities with the Burchett's Farm Barn example. There was actually no consultation with the residents who had use of those garages. And in fact, I understand that confidentiality was enforced around the decision at the time. And I also believe this decision was taken under delegated authority. I'm raising this example just to make two further points. I think that in terms of the procedural rules in the constitution, they do need looking at in terms of how community facilities are disposed of by the council. And again, councillor Hoggart alluded to this point. It could be that we need to look at this in the Corporate Governance Standards Committee task group. But my second point is in terms of the example in Send, and I know that other councillors have illustrated others, I wonder if the audit by KPMG needs to actually be extended to include some of these other examples. And I would certainly urge executive members to consider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Osborne. Councillor Anderson, do you wish to say anything?
I'd love to criticise what Julia Osborne said, but I do think we have to keep the remit of KPMG tight specific to Burchett's Farm that we're discussing now. We will be discussing North Downs housing. I think we've got enough ideas, we've got a lot of ground to cover. We want to try and get this concluded as rapidly as possible and learn from the mistakes that have been made. So reluctantly, I would say that let's just keep a tight specification on this report and not expand it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Anderson. Before we move on, I would just like to thank everyone for their contribution. We've had a lot of really good points made. I think, I was originally going to try and summarise them, but I think it would take too long and I fear that I may omit some that are important and then that would give an unfair view. I would just like to assure everyone that copious notes have been made. I know minutes have been taken. I know minutes have been taken and we've also got a recording of this meeting. And so we will be going through all the comments and feeding them in, not just to the next version of the report, but also looking at the other recommendations that have been made so that we can really learn from this and move forward, not just in the management of community assets that are properly designated, but also looking at community facilities. I think several people have talked about a working group and, or possibly the, the task group, and certainly we will need to give these things more attention. So thank you everybody for your contribution. I'd just like to make one final comment, and that is that we need to take the, the wider learning from this. We've concentrated on, on the barn, but the fact that the, there was some old policy that was very out of date and not really referenced is concerning. I do think that we need to take stock of council policies generally, that we need to have an index of these policies. We need to know what they cover, we need to know when they were produced, when they're due for review and, and who the responsible officer is so that we, we keep on top of these things and that anyone who is making a decision can easily look and see if there is a policy relevant to what they're doing. So I would like to also recommend that we take that forward. Okay. You'll be pleased to know we're now moving on to the North Downs Housing Draft Report. May I now ask the lead councillor for resources, who by now everyone should realise is councillor Tim Anderson, whether he would like to make any comments?
Thank you, chair. The North Downs Housing Governance Report paints a picture of slack, inadequate procedures. The three recommendations in the executive summary says it all. I've paraphrased them. One, there is no formal mechanism for North Downs to report on its performance to the council. Two, there's no terms of reference for the North Downs Board or for GBC Holdings Board, which clearly set out the roles and responsibilities of the committees. Three, there is no action tracker to ensure that actions are assigned a due date and risk rating and are appropriately monitored and tracked. So we really need to move forward to make changes there. However, the report gives equal prominence to three areas of good practice, including a detailed update to the overview and scrutiny committee in July this year. Thank you, chair.
Thank you councillor Anderson. I've got a couple of people in the chat who've asked to speak. First of all, we're going to ask any non-members of the committee. So I have councillors Ruth and Spooner. If anybody else would like to speak, please add into the chat. So councillor Ruth.
Oops. Yes, thank you, madam chairman. I'll try and be brief. At the moment, the structure seems to me that the North Downs Board reports to North Downs, the Holdings Board reports to Holdings and the council is scrutinised by the overview and scrutiny committee. So there is really no upward process from the governance aspects, the board of each, of each organisation. So I would suggest that in order to bring that into account, that because the, the North Downs Housing Board meets every two meetings, every two months, that every two meetings they ought to report to the Holdings Board. And in turn, the Holdings Board should report to the overview and scrutiny, perhaps every six months or so. We can talk about the timeline, but it seems to me we do have to establish a, a system whereby the North Downs reports to the Holdings Board and they report to the overview and scrutiny, or alternatively, the North Downs over, overstep or overjump the Holdings Board and report direct to overview and scrutiny. Because otherwise, there's very little scrutiny, proper scrutiny in time between the organisation, which is on the front line, North Downs, to their 100% shareholder, the Holdings, to their 100% shareholder, the council. And in a sense, the council represents its shareholders, i.e. the residents and council taxpayers of Guildford Borough. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ruth. Would the lead councillor like to respond?
They're, they're very good, practical recommendations. Thank you councillor Ruth.
Thank you. Next up, I have councillor Spooner.
Thank you very much, madam chairman. I don't think there were any surprises, at least for me here, in relation to the KPMG North Downs Governance Report. There have been plenty of, of concerns that have been raised over the course of the last couple of years in relation to the way that this is managed from a governance perspective, and certainly not just from, you know, from outside, but within the committee as well. I've certainly heard that there, there are issues. I am surprised that it states that there were no approved terms of references for the NGH Board. It goes back a while, but councillor Ruth and I, and others in the executive, I'm pretty sure, were looking at terms of reference that were being presented by officers that went through due process. So that, that does surprise me. But in terms of the governance around it, serious concern. And it does actually raise a bigger issue because it talks within this report about overview and scrutiny and the fact that there is no formal process in bringing NGH and perhaps some other areas of council business to ONS. And the issue perhaps for this committee from a governance perspective is that the ONS chairman has actually got very little power except to accept continual delays in reports that are being recommended and presented. Since I became chairman of ONS, I have tried wherever possible to engage with the whole committee when I've had requests for delays. But those delays are quite commonplace and those delays can be quite significant. And I do think that KPMG has raised the issue of these complaints, of, of the process of things that should be coming forward in a prompt manner, being pushed back and pushed back and pushed back for various reasons. And perhaps this committee should look at that and yet another KPMG audit opportunity. Thank you very much indeed, madam chairman.
Thank you councillor Spooner. Councillor Anderson, would you like to respond?
Very, very briefly. Thank you councillor Spooner. Your experience and knowledge of the past is very valuable. I'm confident we'll take your comments on board and that will lead to substantial improvements. Thank you. Madam chair, back to you.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. Apologies, everybody. What I was saying is that I don't see any other non-members of the committee who've requested to speak. Is there anybody? No, I don't think so. Okay, in that case, we will now move on to members of the committee and I have George Potter.
Thank you. Just a very brief comment because I don't repeat anything that's already been said. My impression of the KPMG report on North Downs Housing is that effectively we have here a company that appears to be being, appears to be operating well and successfully despite, rather than because of, its processes and management arrangements. So I think we can add that although these weaknesses do need to be remedied, I do think it is at least a situation where things seem to be operating well despite rather than being actively held back by this. But I do hope that the suggestions already made can be actioned. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Potter. Right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Right. So would the lead councillor like to respond?
Okay. I, I thank councillor Potter for his analysis as always. I think the one thing that has struck me through reading this report is that we really don't know what the aims and objectives of North Downs are. And I think the recommendations provide some clarity about what should be done going forward. But I think also we, we need to do a soul-searching operation and work out why we have North Downs and what it should, its aims and objectives should be. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Anderson. So I'd like to thank everybody for your comments. These are being minuted and they will be reviewed by the auditors and officers as part of the process of finalising the reports. Not only will they review them, but they will be looking to take on board your comments to make sure that everyone who needs to be interviewed is interviewed, that we get the widest possible information feeding into these reports. So the final reports, together with management responses, will be reported to the committee in January for further consideration. Moving to the vote, the revised recommendation is set out on the supplementary information sheet as follows. One, that the internal audit progress report, November 2020, prepared by KPMG, is set out in appendix one to the report to be noted. Two, that the draft reports prepared by KPMG concerning the Burchett's Farm Barn Review and North Downs Housing be noted and scheduled to be resubmitted in form, final format to the meeting to be held on 14th of January 2021. We are able to take a vote by the affirmation of the meeting if there is no dissent. Can I therefore ask the voting members on the committee to indicate your affirmation by turning on your microphones and to collectively confirm that you're happy to note the report?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. So the recommendations are agreed and we are now moving on to item five and I shall return the chair to councillor Nigel Manning.
Thank you very much councillors, Seabrook for excellently handled, chairy. We now move on to item five, which is the planning appeals monitoring report. May I ask Tim Dawes to switch on his camera and microphone to introduce the report, please?
Yes, good evening, everybody. So this report came about following a group leaders' meeting in July this year and was a direct request from the chairman to James Whitehead to bring forward a report to this committee meeting. The main emphasis of this request was to assess member overturns and any associated costs at appeal. It's a factual report that looks at appeal data for two calendar years, 2019 and then 2020 to date. The main things to draw from the report are that in 2019, out of 73 cases we took to committee, 15 officer recommendations were overturned and of these 15, 11 cases ended up at appeal, seven of which were allowed by the planning inspector. I think it's important to stress that no costs were awarded in respect of these appeals. In 2020 and so far this year, there have been 12 member overturns, including two not referenced in the report but occurred on the November committee meeting. And it's too early to advise on any appeal outcomes and associated costs. The report does also look at costs both for and against the council, but because of the time lag and delay, they're often from other calendar years. So costs do work both ways. You can see from the report that we do have success in recovering some costs for the council. Most significant costs are associated in, with public inquiries, as we'd almost certainly instruct barristers, get consultants on board, and the stakes generally are much higher. We have very few public inquiries per annum, as you can see in the report. As an aside, I was asked at chairman's briefing about associated costs, particularly in relation to the plot 23 hearing, which is referenced in the report. I can confirm that our barrister cost £9,200 and the transport engineer who supported us cost £1,600. There are also several officers involved of various seniority and experience. I think five were directly involved in the hearing, actually on the day. I was also asked about officer time and what it's charged out at. It's normally charged out at between sort of £50 to £125 per hour based on seniority. So the report also looks at overall appeal decisions for development management in 2019 and 2020. And you can see that the last two years that the department has had a very strong performance. So nationally, the normal sort of rule of thumb, although it's not written down anywhere, is that you'd want to be somewhere in the region of about two-thirds in terms of winning appeals. In 2019, we were at 72% and to date, we are touching on about 83, 84%. So just to give you the most up-to-date stats for 2020, so this is the calendar year from the first of January, we've had 80 appeal decisions. One actually came in today, so it was 79 yesterday, 80 today. And of those, 66 have been dismissed, 12 allowed and there have been two mixed decisions. The actual number of appeals received this year is 72 so far. I have to say, in all the years I've been at Guildford, I don't recall such a high success rate. And I think it very strongly suggests that we are getting the refusals right and that these decisions, a huge percentage of them are being supported by planning inspectors at appeal. The report towards the end touches on training and the current ongoing peer review by the local government association of the council's planning committee. This was held week before last and will look to report its draft findings by the end of the month. And I'm sure that from the recommendations and the report, a task and finish group or some form of group will be set up to drive forward those recommendations that result from the report. At chairman's briefing, I was asked to ensure that any training should be practical and not theoretical and should be collaborative involving officers and councillors. And I would very much endorse that. So this report concludes that the overall picture on appeal decisions is a healthy one and that member overturns, although quite high, and outcomes at appeal do go against the overturned decisions made, but the overall picture remains healthy. Finally, some concern was raised at chairman's briefing that there was no data for 2018 and a request was made to bring an updated report to the 22nd of April Corporate and Governance Standards Committee with the additional data and observations. I can confirm that there were, I think circa 72 applications that went up in 2018, but I haven't had time to sit that data down further and to report it in the way that it's been reported in this report. So we will endeavour to do that for the April meeting. So I'm very happy to take or try and answer any questions that the committee or committee members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. May I now ask the lead councillor for climate change, councillor Jan Harwood, whether he wishes to make any comments?
Thank you, chair. I'll, I'll keep it brief, bearing in mind the time. There's really not a huge amount of extra to add to this report. It is a very factual report, as Tim has alluded to. The only thing to perhaps highlight is the extraordinary win rate that we're enjoying right now. It really is a testament of the quality of the work that we undertake. I would love to claim any credit for this, but it absolutely not a single iota is down to, to, to anything I've done or introduced. It is simply the hard work of, of the planning officers and the robustness of the, the officers and the robustness of the process that they undertake. Perhaps another point to make is, we perhaps must be a little wary of trying to read too much into these. Yes, it's an extraordinary good figure, but that also suggests that perhaps it'll lower at some point in the future. It ebbs and flows. I think there's a danger of trying to politicise the appeal rate too much. So I'd just like to warn against that where possible. This is simply a good story. Actually, not much of a story at all in many ways. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add, but I'm happy to take questions. I've carefully stayed away from the topic of training. This is an ongoing matter, and we look forward to engaging with the committee further. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Harwood. So firstly, may I ask any non-member of this committee wishes to comment or ask a question?
There's none in the chat box.
I think most have gone, haven't they?
I think they may have, yes.
In that case, does any member of the committee wish to make comment or ask a question? I have, but I'll go last.
I have put my name in the chat box.
You have indeed. You have indeed. It's just popped up, clearly delayed. Yes, councillor Hogg, would you like to speak, please?
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I think the planning department have done very well on their appeals, especially in recent years. And congratulations to them. It's a lot of work. On the issue of the committee overturns, which I guess is what we are particularly interested in, looking at 1.2 and your reasons for asking the committee to look at this, chairman, I think it's a balancing act here, because obviously, the committee have the right to disagree with planning officers. And indeed, sometimes we get it right, and there's quite a few here that were committee overturns to refuse, and were then dismissed at appeal. So the important thing, of course, is that if the planning committee does overturn an officer recommendation, we do it on good, sound planning grounds. And there have certainly been, well, two decisions made in recent months, which I have been very concerned about. And inevitably, we have to talk about training, and I'm sure these things can be put right. I don't think I would go along with your suggestion, which was perhaps tongue-in-cheek, chairman, that there might be a test for those wishing to sit on the planning committee. I think that's probably going a bit far. But certainly, I think some practical training might well be good for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Yes, slightly tongue-in-cheek. But what I don't want, obviously, is the council to be put into special measures because of overturns at the committee, which are then upheld on appeal by the inspector. But anyway, councillor John Redpath, I think you wanted to speak next.
Thank you, Chair, much appreciated. Yeah, I really welcome this report, and I would like to recommend to this committee that we have a regular update. I don't know if once a year is enough. There's this huge delay built in quite often, you know, where appeals are often, you know, a year lagging the decision made either by the officers or the committee. So it would be good if we could have this as a regular item. The only other thing I wanted to mention, very pleased to see that the officers is doing so well at appeal. That really is very, very good. But one thing I think we have to bear in mind is that when these things come to the committee, these are the really, really, I don't know if difficult is the right word, but these are the very contentious ones that have all sorts of other implications attached to them. Maybe some of those aren't quite within, you know, the planning policy that we should all be following. And I think that if you look at the number of those that have failed, it's, I think, 50-55% or something, that really isn't that bad for a planning committee when you think that it's going against the decisions of very, very good professional officer opinion. And to get that sort of success rate at the planning committee level isn't necessarily a bad thing. The committee is there to challenge, not just to echo every word that the officers recommend. Not that those are necessarily wrong, of course. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, John. You're quite right. The planning committee is not there to rubber-stamp officers' recommendations, but they are there to follow policy across the borough rather than necessarily individually individual wards. I think I've just had Catherine Angyung has just come in. Would you like to speak now, Catherine, as you're coming in time?
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much, Chair. Sorry, I couldn't. Although I'm not a committee member, I couldn't get the keyboard to work, which is unusual. So I hope it's not going to crash on me. But it's just a very small point, and it is related to this. And I'm just wondering, do we look at the reasons? I mean, we must track the reasons why things get overturned one way or the other at planning committee. And it's knowing what those reasons are. If that's just, you know, yes, okay, it might be training for some things. But is it related to the policies as well? Is there consistently an influx of planning applications coming through, which perhaps relates to the way people are interpreting the policy, or in fact, if the policy is actually not working for us? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Catherine. That was one of the reasons for the report and my suggestion of a of case studies, in order to see what appeals, what decisions are officer overturns, and then on what basis the inspector decides to allow the appeal. And, you know, that's hopefully what's going to be drawn out in subsequent reports. And what John has mentioned about coming back for a year, the next report is due in April. So I would hope that it's a six-monthly update. And that's one of the reasons why I asked for, in July, I asked for the previous 18 months, was because I knew that asking for current year would actually be no good, because you wouldn't have any idea of cost at all. I think Deborah wants to speak, and then I'll come back. I don't want to hog it. Deborah, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry I was a bit late there. I had the same problem that Catherine did. I was typing a message, but it wouldn't send. So I just wanted to briefly say, there's been mention made of training. I would very much like this to be collaborative training with officers and councillors together, and for us to be able to work through some practical examples, not just as well of things that have been refused, but also perhaps things that have been agreed, but which have been contentious, because our appeals record only concentrates on things that are refused. Of course, people don't appeal if it's granted, but we do have a proportion of unhappy residents who are not pleased with those decisions. So I think the training needs to be balanced, and I think officers and councillors together would make it constructive. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, councillor. Thank you councillor Seabrook. Yeah, Tim mentioned that we're looking for collaborative training, where both officers and members work together, and we go through examples and discuss the whys and wherefores of what the policy means and where misinterpretations could take place. I think also, I think we need to clarify that the officer results to a degree, I know people won't like this, but it's because there is a local plan in place, and therefore, members are now able to show five-year supplies. And developers that are trying to push things beyond what the local plan allows, we've now got policy to say no, and that's what's been obviously supported by the inspectors. So I would actually like to see the officer appeals that go to appeal the results separately from the planning appeal overturns. And then we can then have a far more definitive discussion on how things can be taken forward, what can be taken forward, and how we can try and make things better. Because what we don't want at the end of the day are, I say, bad decisions, which in the end, cost money. But I think what Tim didn't, he'd mentioned it in the, when he was doing his introduction, but what isn't in the report is the actual costs of the barristers that are employed, or the solicitors, et cetera, that are employed to take appeals forward. And also, as Tim mentioned, on one case, there were five officers involved, and that in itself has a time consequence. And I think we do need to understand what all these costs, not only in resources, but in real money, actually cost the council, because it's money that could be spent elsewhere on services. Yeah, I know one appeal cost over £100,000 in costs, and that was just the damages, that was just the cost award, nothing to do with the barrister we employed and things like that. So these things do have a cost and a consequence. And I would like our committee to try and find a way to help to smooth out some of those decisions. But yes, you know, obviously, you know, I know that councillors will and should challenge officers, and on occasions where policy dictates, say, no, we don't agree. And that's not what's there for us. Basically, to try and ensure that we show all members of the council, particularly planning members, how and why decisions have gone the way they have, in the hope that we get far more, say, better, less contentious decisions going forward. So, no, but thank you very much for that. So apart from Tim agreeing that we're going to include the 2018 results, and my asking for the officer appeals and committee overturns to be shown separately, I'd like to actually move on to the vote. So the recommendation of this item is to note the report, and including those two items that I've mentioned. So moving to the vote, under our procedure rules and remote meetings protocol, we are able to take a vote by the affirmation of the meeting if there is no dissent. May I invite voting members of the committee to indicate your affirmation by turning on your microphones and collectively confirming that you agree to note the report and the various comments made during the debate. Is that a good?
Agreed.
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 Thank you very much. I didn't hear any no's. Were there any?
I don't think so, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we'll now move on to item six. This is the committee's work programme. This committee's work programme agenda for the next 12 months is set out in appendix one to the report, pages 57 to 63 of the agenda. You will note from the supplementary information sheet that following discussions last week, it has been suggested that we have an additional meeting of this committee in April 2021. This is because we have a very long list of items of business scheduled for January and March, in addition to certainly one item that has been carried forward, and an extra meeting on the 22nd of April will help us to spread the business more evenly for much more manageable agendas. So the committee is asked to consider and approve the revised rolling work programme as set out in appendix three to the supplementary information sheet. You will note that the further report on planning appeal monitoring that was scheduled in the work programme for June 2021 has now been brought forward to the 22nd of April meeting, so as to have it in a whole year and have previous two years brought in. Does anyone have any comments on the revised work programme? Because there's silence, so the recommendation is that the committee updated 12-month rolling work programme as detailed in supplementary information sheet be approved. Under our procedure rules and remote meetings protocol, we are able to take a vote by the affirmation of the meeting if there is no dissent. So may I invoke voting members of the committee to indicate your affirmation by turning on your microphones and collectively confirming that you agree the recommendations?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. I didn't hear any no's. Were there any? No, thank you very much. So that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. The video, audio now stops. So, John, if you could stop the recording.